You would all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Or bring it closer to you.
Okay, everybody have their mics turned on? And phones silenced? All right, we'll do, start with roll call. Kristin Graves.
Here.
Chad Impelizieri. Dave Nusdorfer.
Here.
Kevin Woodward.
Rita Service.
Here.
And me, Laura Anderson, here. Okay. First item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, any questions or changes to the agenda? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the approval of the August 17, 2022, meeting minutes. I have a couple of corrections to start with. So, at the bottom of page one, just before Anderson closed the public hearing, the last line, just before that, there was a public comment, I believe from a Bill Absalom, who had no objections to Mr. Loy's variance request. And then on the last page, the motion by Anderson to deny was based on the findings of fact, criteria A, B, and D are not met. Does anybody else have any corrections?
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
You wait.
All right. Then can I have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
So move.
Second?
I second it.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, do we have any conflicts of interest tonight from the board? Okay. Then let's move on to public comment. At this point, we do have a time for public comment during the hearing of the case, so this would be any public comment not related to the case? None? Public comment that is not related to the case we are hearing tonight? Okay. Any communications that are not related to the case tonight? Okay, then we'll get on with the hearing of the case. I'll start by reading the procedures. The public hearing for this case before us tonight will proceed as follows. The official records of the case will be presented by the township staff. Then we will read any communications received regarding the case. After that, the applicant will present their case. Public comment will follow, first by interested persons in support, then by interested persons in opposition. Rebutts will be heard in the same order. At that point, I will close the public hearing and the board will go into closed session. After the board completes its deliberation, it will reopen the meeting and the board will render its decision. I would also like to remind everyone that during the conduct of a hearing, all comments shall be directed through the chairperson. So, at this point, I open the public hearing of ZBA 2022-02, Torch Lake LLC zoning ordinance interpretation and appeal of zoning administrator's decision. Sarah and Todd, I think you have.
Sure, I'm just going to give you a little bit of background information, being that I'm a zoning administrator, that the decision's being appealed, and then Todd can give you a little bit more information as the township attorney. And feel free at any time to ask any questions that you might have, either now or throughout the process, to Todd or myself, if there's something that you need some clarification on. So, this appeal is generated from a violation letter that was sent out. It was included in your packet. There's two violation letters and then kind of a follow-up one. So the first one was in June, mentioning a patio in the waterfront setback. And I will just remind the zoning board of appeals that on lake's properties, your front setback gets changed to the water setback and your rear setback becomes your road setback. So they kind of flop. So that's where we get our waterside setback from. That's traditionally your front yard setback, becomes your water setback at 50 feet. So that this patio is located within the 50-foot setback. Sent a follow-up letter out after not hearing anything, and at that time, we had some discussions with the applicant, or, well, representatives for the applicant at the property. And that's when they informed us about the exemption letter that's in your packet that was from the previous zoning administrator. So they were thinking that they had done everything correctly and were compliant with the ordinance. So after a meeting that we had with them and the attorneys, we came back with a final letter that kind of laid out our final position, that they still were in violation of the waterside setback, and that we do not allow for helicopters landing and taking off in the R1 district. That's a use that would need to happen, you know, at an airport or somewhere else. It's not a use listed in the zoning ordinance. So that prompted their appeal here to the zoning board of appeals to determine if, A, that the structure, the patio, is located properly, and then if the helicopters are used allowed in the R1 district. So I'll turn it over to Todd to give a little bit more information about both of those. There was a memo that we sent out on Monday, I believe that Todd provided. So hopefully you had a chance to take a look at that. That was after the packet went out. So if you didn't or you need more time, feel free to speak up. Because we had that from Todd and then the applicant, we sent over a letter this morning to you that came through late last night.
I don't have a lot to add beyond that. I think that what you have before you are two separate requests. One involving a structure that is allegedly within the front yard setback, and a second one pertaining to an analysis of a use, that is, the use of a helicopter to gain access to and from a private residence in the R1 district, and whether or not that is a use that is permitted under the ordinance. And so I've given you a memo that I think addresses both of those issues. One of the things that I would address, and we can address it as we get into the arguments more, but I do know the applicants have argued that the township has essentially waived the argument that the township cannot enforce the setback against the patio that was placed in the front yard setback because of a, what it was the document called, a waiver of permit filed with the county by the former zoning administrator, Deb Graber. And it was a land use exemption form, is what they provided. I don't believe that that is an issue that is properly before the ZBA tonight. It's not the ZBA's job to determine whether or not the township has waived its right or done anything to interfere with its right to enforce its zoning ordinance. That is an issue for the township board to take up if and when it decides it wants to pursue enforcement, depending in part on what this board decides tonight with respect to whether or not the patio is a violation of the ordinance. And so I would advise the board that that is not an issue that you need to wade into, that that is not something that is in your authority to even decide. And so as we get to that, we can talk about that more, but the memo does touch on that briefly.
And did you want to elaborate on the second issue we're deciding? The use, you said we're basically looking at two issues.
Yeah, the second issue is whether or not the use of a helicopter to get to and from your home is a use that is permitted within the R1 district. And as I have set forth in the memo, your ordinance is a permissive ordinance, which means you're allowed to do those things that the ordinance says that you can do in any particular zoning district. Landing helicopters is not a use that is set forth in the permitted uses section of R1, or even in the special uses section. And so if you are going to use your property as a helicopter landing pad, then the argument necessarily has to be that it's an accessory use to the principal use in the R1 district, which is a single-family dwelling. And if you look at your ordinance, it contains a definition of accessory use as a use on the same lot and of a nature customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use. And that's what the majority of my memo that I provided you with addresses, is that analysis and my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Okay. Communications, Sarah, do you want to read those?
Sure. So we received a letter from Bob Spencer dated November 16. That should be on your desk, from him, related to the appeal. He lays out a couple points. I guess he thinks that the zoning administrator correctly interpreted the setback requirement of the ordinance, kind of as a general thought. He's got some other thoughts in there as well. There's a letter from Clint Marcus, I'm not exactly sure how to say the last name, that's dated November 16, about that we should reassess the decision about not allowing helicopters to land on residential properties. And the other one is from Chad Impazelli. I don't know how to say his last name. Impelizieri, there we go. I knew there were more syllables in there. And he provided some findings of fact that he thought of the case. So those were the three letters that I had, and they're, all three of them should be on your desk.
Okay, can we take a couple minutes to scan through them?
Whatever you'd like to do, yeah.
Is that good? Okay, let's move on to the applicant's presentation. If you could come up to the microphone here and state your name.
All right, can everyone hear me all right?
No.
You speak a little louder.
Is this loud enough?
Okay. My name is Elizabeth McLaughlin. I'm attorney at Allward Fisher Rice Row and Graff. I represent Torch Lake LLC, the owners of 11756 West Point Road. I submitted a brief to you all, and if anyone should want a copy of it, I do have extra. I placed on that chair right there. This appeal, I agree with your attorney, is focused on Michigan case law and how we would interpret that law with the facts at hand.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Sorry.
Maybe you could tilt the mic up just a little and speak real close to me.
Is this better? Okay, thank you. Do you need me to repeat anything?
Pardon?
I will go ahead and do my best to speak directly into the microphone.
Okay.
I think the best place to start here is the zoning ordinance itself, which you've heard a little bit about so far. Torch Lake Township allows for an accessory use in an R1 district once a dwelling has been erected. Here, that is not an issue, the dwelling is in place. Torch Lake Township defines an accessory use as a use on the same lot and of a nature customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use. The key term here is customarily incidental. Interpretation of terms from one state's court system to another often varies. I cited a few cases in my brief, Reddington and Sinclair, from states other than Michigan, that interpret customarily incidental to mean customarily and incidental. Or in other words, the use must be both common and incidental to the principal use. I think a review of this interpretation is, by these states, is helpful in evaluating Michigan's interpretation of the same language, because Michigan's interpretation has taken an opposite view. And this is seen in Lerner, which is the case I attached to my brief. In Lerner, the controlling case on this issue, the court stated, and I quote, "Activity must be customarily incident to the residential use, not merely customary and incidental." And I know this is kind of playing with words here. But the Michigan court is essentially saying that the interpretation of other states may be that the term requires customary and incidental use. But in Michigan, the term "customarily" modifies incident, and it does not stand on its own. Due to this interpretation, Lerner goes on to state that cases in Michigan in which a use was customarily incidental were uses that enhanced the principal use of the property and was found not to be an accessory, and that is a direct quote from that case. Here, the use of the helicopters solely for private use by the owners for transportation to their home, from their home to the airport and vice versa. Regardless of any considerations of norms in the area, this use does enhance the use of the property, which is a requirement, and the use only exists because of the principal use of the property as a residence, which is the other requirement. In general, Michigan has quite broadly interpreted customarily incidental. Those uses noted by the court as not customarily incidental to a residential property were all commercial uses. The use here is not commercial. And if we get more into the facts, I think they further support helicopter transportation as an accessory use. This helicopter is merely transporting individuals to and from their home, just like a car would, just like other lakefront homeowners travel via boat to a friend's house to dinner, to meet up at the lake, just as seaplanes have traditionally been used in northern Michigan to get to and from the airport to a residence on the lake. As far as the patio goes, sorry, we're not contending that the patio is not within the 50-foot setback. It is, I think you all have seen photos. And we're not even contending that the zoning administrator, on their own and sole authority, can deviate from the zoning ordinance. We're said claiming that the zoning administrator acted in a way that creates a contract in equity, which would have stopped the township from enforcing the ordinance in this specific situation. Whether or not you all decide that that's an issue for you here today or for the township board, I'll leave with you. However, I'll just explain the situation a little bit more. The courts in Michigan have the power of equity or the power to make decisions, not based on statute of law, but based on fairness. If a contract in equity exists, a party can be asked from claiming that they have the high ground in a dispute based on the law. So there are really three factors to equitable estoppel in Michigan. The first is that representations were made that induced an individual to believe certain facts. The party justifiably relied on those representations, and that the party is prejudiced, and that prejudice goes beyond de minimis, which is just a minimal amount of prejudice. There is a case in Michigan called Pittsfield Township versus Malcolm. And in there, an individual applied for and received a building permit from the township. Based on this permit from the township, they went and they built a $45,000 kennel. Township waited 10 months to intervene and start enforcing. Based upon that, the court alone found that that was not de minimis, and that the township was in fact asked from enforcing their zoning ordinance. And here, this is a very similar situation. This patio was in no way concealed. In fact, the township had notice of it. I think you'll see the exemption form that was attached to the packet. And the facts here do go beyond de minimis. So here, I'm just asking you to look at the zoning ordinance in Michigan's precedential case law. And I really believe that helicopter transportation to and from one's home is an accessory use, just like any other mode of transportation would be. I would also like the township to forego enforcement of the 50-foot setback, as there was a contract in equity. And that is all I have right now on that. Do you have questions?
Does anyone have questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So you're talking about, so what is it that is there? You say in your brief that it's a patio. You say in your brief that it's a helipad, and you say in your brief that it's a landing pad. So what is it?
It can be, it can really be used for any of those purposes. I believe it was designed as a patio by a landscaping company up here that functions quite well as a landing pad or helipad.
So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding you. So you're contending that what you're saying is a patio, even though your very own legal brief calls it a patio, a helipad, and a landing pad?
I would say it's all three.
But you got permission as a patio, but now you're saying it's the three things?
Yeah, the permission was for a patio. I'm not contending that the township had noticed that it was going to be used for a helipad.
So I'm sorry, so you're saying that in fact the township did not know that it was going to be used as a helipad? That it was given the impression that it was going to be used as a patio, which is saying that the township did not know it was going to be used as a helipad? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I'm saying it's two separate issues, the patio itself, but then the helicopter use as an accessory use.
Well, I guess then if it's a patio, you really don't need to worry about landing it there because it's a patio, not a heli, not a helipad.
From my understanding, the helicopter could also be landed on the grass, and that would be okay with the FAA.
I don't think that's what being talked about today, about landing on a grass.
No, but you're inquiring as to the use of the patio.
I'm just trying to figure out what it is, what it is that they have. Because like I said, you've used the three words interchangeably in your brief. So I'm just trying to figure out what it is actually that you're contending that this is. So you're contending now that you're saying that it's actually a patio, but it's really all three things, but the township didn't know. And I'm putting words in your mouth. What you're saying is, I thought you also said, but the township really didn't know you were going to use it as all that.
When the exemption form was signed, the attached documents labeled it as a patio. And I believe that's what the township knew at that point in time. I'm not sure when the township became aware of the helicopter use. That would probably be within the knowledge of the members here.
Okay, that's, that's an answer to my question.
Any other questions? Okay. Time for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to get up and speak to this issue?
Laura, would you just like to mention the rules for public comment again?
Fill out a card? It didn't look like we had a lot, so I wasn't going to, I'll limit it to...
Whatever you, I just, just as a refresher, if it's just fill out a card, that's fine, too.
Okay. Did you grab a card and fill one out?
Oh, I didn't.
That's, you know, go ahead and speak, and if you go back and fill it out afterwards, state your name clearly for us, please.
My name is Michael Lucido, L-U-C-I-D-O. I'm a resident in Kuwaitan at 11720 Easy Street. And as a resident, what I noticed was that we had helicopter flyovers. And I work from home. I do telehealth as a psychologist. And it was a morning that I heard the helicopter fly over. It was very loud. I couldn't hear my patient at the time. It was disruptive. I went outside. I was in somewhat disbelief, because usually the Coast Guard will fly along in the center and they'll do their flyovers. But to see that it was a use of transportation bothered me, because I started to think about what is going on in some of our local lakes, where people are starting to use helicopters as landing pads, such as in Charlevoix. And the use of that, I think, disrupts our natural peace up here. We live in a rural community, and I understand that helicopters can fly at any distance, which is disconcerting for me, that they can fly over my house at 95 feet, and that's okay. It disrupts our natural wildlife, loons. We have bald-headed eagles. It's just, it's hard to think that if every owner had the right to land their helicopter wherever they, you know, pleased on their property, that if we allowed this to happen, that we would be losing something. And so if this is allowed, then every property owner on Torch Lake could, well, in our township at least, land on their property, and that's, I wanted to speak against that. As a property owner here, as a year-round member here, that I love this area, and I just, I would hate to see that this would be allowed. So there's other ways to, they could land at the Torch Lake Airport. I don't know if they can, but they could land over there and then drive a limousine, a big car, and be able to get to their house just, just the same. So, but that's my comments regarding it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deb Graber, 1227 Beachland Lane. I live at the Torchport Airport. I wrote the exemption permit because you are, at the time when I was the zoning administrator here at Torch Lake, you were allowed to have a ground-level patio in the setback, ground level. And that's what they told me they were building, was a ground-level patio. Helicopters, heliports, never, helipads was never even discussed. Anytime I got a call that was about this particular property after the trout sold, it was, well, I can neither confirm nor deny, but they want to do this, they want to do this, they want to do this. And they would never give a lot of detail. Blackmore Properties was basically the front verbal face of Keith and Heather Stone for Torch Lake LLC. But I was never informed of a helipad. I was never talked about. I know from living at the Torchport Airport, he did buy a hangar at the airport, Mr. Stone. I think it's in a different name altogether, Global Transport or something like that. And they use it for storage of miscellaneous things. The Blackmore Properties comes and goes. I know he has a fleet of planes and helicopters, Mr. Stone does, so... I know he has a fleet of planes and helicopters, Mr. Stone does. So... but there is other helipads, at least one other one that I know of, that has been brought into existence sometime in the last year, year and a half. So this isn't the only one on Torch Lake in this township, so you may hear about this again. So that's not the only helicopter flying and landing over there, in addition to the Coast Guard. And living at the Torchport Air Park, I hear the Coast Guard all the time, so... And I do support aeronautics. I think it's great. I love airplanes and all that. We have helicopters flying at the airport. It's fine. But regarding this patio, it was listed as a patio. It was discussed as a patio. I took photos. I was out on the site when they were doing this. And never was it ever mentioned to be a helipad. Thanks.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
My name's Dave Howland and I live at 267 Northwest Torch Lake Drive, approximately not 2,000 feet from the helicopter pad. My issue isn't so much with the patio, pad, whatever it is today, but it is with the fact of the use of this property, this residential property. This is not just one helicopter. This is two helicopters and they have their plane that carries 14 or so, which is a different issue in itself. These planes... these helicopters were coming in this summer at a pretty regular rate at 6:30 a.m. I don't know if anybody else is retired. 6:30 a.m., they're landing within, as a crow flies, probably 1,000 feet from my place. These helicopters, not every time, but they have a habit of pulling up and coming by and buzzing your property so that they can show off whatever they need to show off. These helicopters are not used as a car, as somebody else would use their car to go to their property. They bring in lots of people with these helicopters. They're not used just as a family matter. They're used as for their entertainment, for all their friends. I think it's... you know, if we let this go by on our property... I've been here since 1964 and I watch it every time those helicopters take off and the sand's flying all over the place and the crap's going on and the decibels... I don't know. I saw this letter. If my washing machine was that loud, I would be... I'd close my hand. I tell you what, it's louder than heck. It's obnoxious. But if you want to keep the patio there, as long as it's a patio and used as a patio, I don't have a problem with that. Thank you.
My name is Bill Stridion. I live at 5903 North ME 88 in Eastport. You really beat me to the punch. I happened to be out in our boat one day at 2:30 in the afternoon. And I'm going up on... towards Sandpoint, towards the patio area. And in comes a helicopter over my head, probably 300 feet, obviously getting ready to land. So he hovers, comes down, sand comes up, is blowing on their neighbor's property. Thank gosh, I don't live next to them. I live the north end. So I'm kind of impressed, actually. I'm looking at this helicopter, said, boy, that's a sweet ride, that thing. Right after that comes in this 14-place seaplane. It lands on the lake, right next to their property. Obviously, we're having some sort of event to let all these people off. But as I'm leaving, the helicopter took off again, blew up sand, encircled three times at low altitude around the house. So my point is to affirm your statements. This isn't meant to be a commercial organization. It's meant to be a residence. And that much traffic at a residence with this kind of aircraft really doesn't fit within our community. Thank you.
My name is Lee Scott. I live at 347 Northwest Torch Lake Drive. And I live a little closer to that point than Dave does. And I just wanted to make two comments. One was Dave's comment that the helicopters were operating at 6:30 in the morning. My wife will say that they were operating at 5:30 in the morning. So it was pretty early in the morning. And the other thing I would like to clarify is the presentation by Torch Lake LLC indicated that the helicopters were used to transport people to and from the airport. We witnessed helicopters taking off, circling around, and it was very obviously they were taking their guests for rides in the helicopter. And so I just wanted to make sure you know that it was being used for entertainment and not strictly transportation to and from the house. So, thank you.
My name is Casey Wiggins. I live at 131 Northwest Torch Lake Drive. I'm approximately three-quarters of a mile from the Sandpoint. Very familiar with that area. My family built here in 1955. I grew up here and now I own the property. My comment here, not to beat on a dead horse, is that my observation is this is not a use that is simply transporting people from the airport to the home and back. As a pilot, I'm also aware of FAA rules of flying safely. And there are several ordinances, one principally, that says you must be 500 feet above any congested area. And I believe this area is a residence. There are multiple homes in that area. Flight underneath 500 feet should be an FAA violation. Clearly, what I've observed is that's not the case. I've witnessed several takeoffs and landings that I would call aggressive. Clearly, if that kind of takeoff and landing happened at Traverse City Airport, they would have got a call from the tower. So in addition to what colleagues have said, I think that there is, in addition to just a general use issue, there's also a safety issue that needs to be examined. There's good policy, good procedure that's outlined that any CFI would ascertain to is not being followed in flights with these helicopters to and from that residence. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, let's see, what is it? 7:42. I'm going to close the public hearing and the board will begin its deliberation. And once we are finished, we will reopen the public hearing and render our decision.
Sure. Laura, before you get started, I want to make sure that everybody had a copy of Todd's... a hard copy of that in their packet. I didn't have one in mine. And so I want to make sure you do have it. I know you got it electronically and you may have printed it out.
I have a blank hard copy.
Sure.
That's this one right here, right? Yes. Yeah, I got it. I printed that out.
I'm good. I have it.
You're good, Laura?
I am good.
Okay.
Would the board like to discuss any of this or should we just start right... are you ready to start in with findings of facts?
I have a question. I'm still... Yes, I can. I'm still confused on this. When we... was the signing off, the previous administrator signed off on the patio. She didn't have the authority to do that, is what I'm reading.
So...
Is that... am I right with that? Is that right? That she did not have the legal authority to do that?
If it is a violation of the ordinance.
Well, it wasn't a violation because it wasn't within the 50 feet.
A zoning administrator does not have authority to ignore the zoning ordinance. So if she signed off on something that was not permitted under the ordinance, then that is an invalid action. Whether or not that gives the property owners a shield against an enforcement action by the township is a different question.
And that is something you say we don't... shouldn't get involved with?
Correct.
So I would like to point out that the document that she signed off on said a ground-level patio near shoreline. It doesn't specify... I mean, they didn't ask or indicate that they were going to build it in the setback. It could have said near shoreline or near road, meaning it was going to be on the waterside or on the roadside. You know, I described where I lived as being near the township hall. Well, I live three-quarters of a mile away from the township hall. So I think that this is a... I don't think that this is a word that... a definitive explanation of where it was going to be built. And so I think that merely she was signing off on the fact that you do not need a permit to build a patio. It doesn't... there's no evidence that she was signing off telling them they could build in the setback.
So is this something we should just kind of drop from there?
Well, it's something that's... that really isn't an issue in terms of determining whether the patio itself is in violation. I think... I think we just go through the findings of facts and we decide, you know, is a patio allowed in a 50-foot setback? So...
I would agree with that. That's two different issues. One, is the patio itself in violation of the ordinance? And then, two, the next step, which I'm suggesting you don't need to address tonight, is what are the ramifications of Deb signing the letter authorizing, well, whatever that authorized, the land use exemption? I don't know if you've had a chance to review it very thoroughly, but I would encourage you to take a look at subsection B of the brief document submitted by the Allward Fisher firm on page four. The very first sentence of their subsection B says, "The patio does violate the setback zoning ordinances because the patio is a structure placed within the 50-foot setback area from the water's edge." So I think they're acknowledging...
I think so, too. That's why I was wondering what we were going to try to accomplish with the pad, just dealing with that.
Well, let's move forward with the findings of fact on that issue because I think it's pretty straightforward. They have admitted that it is, number one, a structure. It's in the 50-foot setback. So should we... let's just start with you, Kristen?
Well, my first one was helicopter pad patio is within the 50-foot water's edge. So there's that fact. Another fact I have is the property is zoned R1 district. Another fact I had was the Antrim County Building Department land use exemption form was signed for a ground-level patio, not a heliopad. I have another fact as the foundation used heat when put in place. And then I talked to...
So that... so, meaning that goes to it being a structure?
Yes. Because then if you look at our section 2.16, no structure may be located within 50 feet of water's edge of Torch Lake. And then the last... the last one I talked about was the size. Because again, that talks about how big something can be. And I wrote the helicopter pad slash patio is over 700 square feet. Because I did the radius, so it's 15 feet squared times pi is at least 700... 706.8 square feet. And that's only the circle in the diagram they gave us. It doesn't include the rectangular piece coming off of the patio.
Rita, would you like to...
I have about 16 findings of fact. So I agree with the one that Kristen just said, that the applicant's property falls within an R1 zone. The second one is ZBA decision of 2020-3 defines the structure and the helipad falls within that definition. The third finding of fact is that the helipad is located within an R1 area. The fourth finding of fact is that the ZBA just received a legal brief today or late last evening before the hearing. Let me know if you... if anybody has any questions or any of these findings of fact?
If...
If anybody disagrees?
If there's any discussion on these or questions about them, just pipe in at that point in time, please.
My next one is that throughout their legal brief, the terms patio, landing pad, and helipad are used interchangeably. There is no dictionary definition of a patio that includes its usage as a helipad. Only the term patio was used for the exemption certificate. My next point is that on their legal brief, I did spend a lot of time today reading their legal brief. The legal brief dated November the 15th of 2022, page five, middle paragraph, their fourth sentence, states in quotes, "In reliance, a patio was built." This is in direct contradiction of their own statement on page three, first paragraph, first sentence, that says, quote, "Owners of the property are using the helipad for transportation." This brief continually refers to this structure as being used for a helicopter. The second... the next statement of fact is that the certificate signed by the former zoning administration clearly states patio. Again, back to the legal brief dated November the 15th, section one, second paragraph, first sentence, states, "Importantly, our client sought approval prior to construction." This is their quote in their legal brief.
Which one is this?
This is section one, the second paragraph, first sentence, that states, "Importantly, our client sought approval prior to construction of a, quote, patio slash landing pad." In their very own attachment, which is a copy of the exemption certificate, it clearly states project, ground-level patio near shoreline, not a quote-unquote patio landing pad as stated in their legal brief. The next statement of fact in their legal brief, section one, second paragraph, second sentence, states that the certificate allows a patio to be built within... this is where their brief again says, that the certificate allows a patio to be built within a 50-foot setback area. And Laura, as you pointed out... And Laura, as you pointed out, the exemption certificate, nowhere on that exemption certificate is there a statement specifically allowing construction within that 50-foot setback. All it says is near shoreline. There is no language at all on that certificate that authorized a setback exemption. Continuing on with their legal brief. If you look at page four, section B, they come out and admit that it not only is it a structure within the 50 feet setback, but it is also a violation of Torch Lake Township's ordinance, section 2-16. As I continue on, and Sarah, just so I know, if, if it's not defined within the zoning ordinance, then we use a dictionary for a definition?
Correct.
Okay. So in section 702, the applicant states that the helipad is an accessory use to the principal use. The zoning ordinance defines accessory use as a use on the same lot and of a nature customarily incidental and subordinate to principal use. Customarily is not defined in the zoning ordinance, but the dictionary's definition is in accordance with what is customary or usual, by or according to custom or established practice. The thesaurus says synonyms are accepted, traditional, common, conventional, standard. The helipad is not common, standard, or conventional in Torch Lake Township. Incidental is also not defined in the zoning ordinance, but the dictionary defines it as happening or likely to happen in an unplanned or subordinate conjunction with something else. Synonyms, ancillary, coincidental, secondary. Just a few more. Still continuing with that same thought. The applicant's very own site plans shows the use to be as helipad as a primary versus an accessory use. The applicant in section two, big A, small i, states, "The Michigan law acknowledged the following as customarily incidental, private tennis courts, a garage, a horseshoe pitching court. A helipad is not aligned with these items and is not a standard on Torch Lake." The applicant also has used the term patio. Patio in the dictionary is defined as a paved outdoor area adjoining, adjoining a house. A recreation area that adjoins a dwelling is often paved and is adapted especially for outdoor dining. However, if you look at the applicant's appeal, their plan shows bearing markers, north, south, east, and west. The applicant's plan also follows the footprint of, and I'm going to mispronounce it, the engineering, Pryne and Newhoff's engineering drawings that refer to the structure. So their current quote unquote patio, helicopter pad, landing pad, follows the exact footprint of the engineer's drawing that actually refers to the structure as the proposed pad with footnotes on that drawing that says for touchdown and liftoff area, as well as a final approach and takeoff area. Applicant did not adhere to the description of the exemption form with the final structure. Again, back on November the 15th legal brief. If you look at section one, the second paragraph, it states, "The zoning ordinance does not specifically provide for use of vehicles as transportation to and from one's residence, but this use exists and is allowed. On the contrary, since the zoning ordinance does not list a helicopter as a permissible use, it is therefore not allowed." In addition, in the same paragraph written by the applicant, it states, "This residential district includes residents who uses boats to get to and from dinner, and motor vehicles, motorized vehicles are used for recreational purposes. This is an attempt to rationalize helicopter usage. It is a standard practice of using boats and other watercraft on a lake, which has its own set of ordinances that owners must abide by." Two more. The applicant's letter, legal brief again. If you look at paragraph four in section one on the last sentence, it states, "The traffic congestion is a large concern, and the use of the helicopter to get to and from the airport can avoid and alleviate some pressure on US 31. However, the applicant would travel one mile from US 31, from Torch Lake Airport to Barnes Road. In addition, Torch Lake Airport is three miles to the applicant's front gate. There is no evidence presented what their quote unquote pressure their automobile would create on US 31." And last, the former zoning administrator signed an exemption form for a ground level patio. What they've done is fail the definition of a ground level and a patio. The applicant clearly misstated that a ground level patio was being construction, being constructed versus actually a helipad. That's the end of my findings of fact.
Okay. So I probably have some questions with some of these as far as whether they're really practical to, in terms of what we're looking at here?
Okay.
So let's see. The, when they were building this, the site, for example, did anybody in the township see the site plan? I don't believe so. There's no indication. That would have been evidence that, that they had presented it in. You said the site plan says.
There's no indication, to the best of my knowledge, that any of the site plans were done when, when the exemption certificate was being requested. I think the drawings are now just part of the appeal, from what I understand.
Yeah, we don't have any, there, in our search of the files and the records, we don't have any site plans or drawings or anything on file. And in fact, we didn't, you know, have the exemption form here until they presented it as a form, which makes sense. It's not a township form either. It's a county form. It would be a part of their building permit process. So we've been unable to find any supporting documentation.
Okay. So another, number, I think that it's, in terms of the findings of facts, whether or not they call it a helipad or a patio in terms of the structure being built in, within the setback. I think that, that we probably don't need to go over that because, or add that to the list of findings. Does that make sense to you in terms of, they've admitted that it's a structure and it's in the setback?
I'm not sure I agree with that because, because the individual, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but they're claiming that there is a quote unquote equity contract based upon this exemption certificate, and their reliance on this exemption certificate. So the exemption certificate, there is no contract if the exemption certificate talks about near shore and it's a patio. So their, their statement about it, it is like, it is a contract. I don't, I don't believe that it is because they're relying on something that's non-existent on a form. They're inserting words into that certificate that's not there. And they're blaming the zoning administrator for something that they failed to make known to the township.
Yeah, so I think your point 10 covers that well.
Okay. Where I'm saying the certificate saying that it was, where they claim in their brief that it was built within 50-foot setback, even though certificate, there's no language at all on that certificate.
Right.
But yet they claim that it's an equity contract, and they relied on that certificate to build, even though that, that certificate is null and void of any of that language.
Okay. Great, thank you. Kevin, did you have any, did you have any findings of facts you wanted to add?
I have a couple of comments.
Okay, great.
Nicely done, Rita, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
My question, Todd, are we, the first issue before us is, is it in the setback? Correct? Is the, we're talking about, are they in fact the patio slash whatever you want to call it? Is that what we're talking about first? Are they, I guess, to my point, by their admission under section B, and the fact, my findings of fact are, I have a zoning book full of all kinds of ordinances by admission to how you're supposed to assemble and build based on what we've set forth. That would be where I'm at, on the patio itself. Because I believe that's what we were talking about first, wasn't it? Is it in fact?
Yes.
Madam Chair, right? Okay, so that's where I stand on that. That they've admitted that, in fact, even though they follow back up, but by their admission under section B, that's where I stand.
Okay. David, did you have any?
I think you've covered it very well. I liked the part about the traffic on 31. That was pretty heavy traffic there.
All right. Let's see. I think you all have covered a lot of the findings I've had. Let's see. Did we include that ground level, ground level decks are exempt from zoning permit requirements? That's our zoning ordinance 19.02B. But that I think we kind of covered, have it, structures that are exempt from permit requirements shall conform to all setback requirements. And that's also 19.2B. Did we get that covered in one of the other ones?
No, I don't think we did. And I think that's really important because that second sentence says, these, sorry, that second sentence says, "These structures shall conform to all setback requirements." And I think that needs to be noted.
Okay.
But to your point about ground level, Laura, one of the comments that I made was, is that actually ground level means that the level of the land in its unmodified state or in a state which has been graded with the municipality's approval for the purposes of, so when you were talking about ground level, it's, it fails on the definition of ground level as well.
Okay. And Sarah, maybe you can help me locate this. I thought I read that so many inches off the ground?
We do have a definition for ground level in Article 23. And so ground level says having a surface not more than six inches above the ground.
Okay. So then, I'm not sure that that makes a difference because we've defined that it's a structure and it's in the, in the setback. So whether it's six inches or ground level or a foot above the ground is really not an issue. It's that it is a structure. Okay. So let's see if we can put together our list of findings, at least as far as this setback issue goes. I think we have property is in an R1 zoning district. The helicopter pad is within 50 feet of the water's edge. And feel free to interject here if, as I'm saying this, if you disagree. The zoning ordinance requires a 50-foot setback of all R1 zone properties? You guys can kind of go, mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes, I agree.
I don't think I've done ZBA 2020-3 decision defines a structure, defines a structure, and helipad falls within this definition? Pardon? ZBA 2020-3 decision defines a structure of hel, a structure, and helipad falls within the definition? Okay, then under zoning ordinance, section 1902B, ground level decks are exempt from zoning permit requirements, and structures that are exempt from permit requirements shall conform to all setback requirements?
Can I ask you a question on that, though?
Yeah.
I'm confused when you're talking about ground level because this isn't ground level. So that's why I'm, I'm not sure when you're saying it is a finding of fact.
Okay, let's go. I think it says, any structure that is that, is it? I think it says any structure that is exempt. So.
Yeah, it's section 19.02B zoning permit exemption. I did copy, it's in my memo, too. I copied it, copied it right out of the zoning ordinance. It says ground level decks and temporary accessory storage buildings without footings or foundations and with footprints under 200 square feet in area and a height not exceeding 12 feet shall be exempt from the permit requirements of this ordinance.
Okay, so that's the finding of fact, but we're saying that this is in violation of this because it's not ground level and it's more than 200 square feet. That's the finding of fact?
No, that's, that is not how I'm viewing it. I'm seeing it as that it is a structure that is exempt from a zoning permit. And so what you're saying is it's not exempt from a zoning permit, but that's kind of not our. That's not a violation that you've cited, so we're really not addressing that or arguing that. We're arguing, we are agreeing that it's, that it is a structure that is exempt from a zoning permit. And as such, this structure shall conform to all setback requirements.
Okay, I got it. All right, I like that language, okay.
Yeah, it's the second sentence there.
Okay.
These structures shall conform to all setback requirements. That's the part that's really important.
Okay, I was misunderstanding. I thought you were saying that, all right, I got it. Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
So I guess, are we good with that, then?
Yes.
I think I would also add this, just in case this goes further. And that would be that the zoning administrator does not have the authority to grant a dimensional variance. And so, and that just goes to the argument that they were saying by signing this form, this, that she was in effect granting a dimensional variance. Yay or nay?
I like it.
I thought we weren't discussing with the authority or not the authority to sign this certificate. Maybe I'm confused again.
Well, that's why I prefaced that with, in case this goes further, that's our stance on it.
Okay. That she didn't, the stance is that she did not have the authority to sign that, based on what Mr. Malar said, then I would concur that in fact she did not have the authority to say that, if that's what you're saying.
No, she had, she didn't have the authority, any zoning administrator does not have the authority to grant a dimensional variance. That is a ZBA. And to assume that signing that was granted of a dimensional variance.
Okay.
Is mistaken.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So are we going to include where the applicant itself has admitted that in fact they are in violation as a finding of fact?
We can, which one on your list?
That was, it's in their letter, section one, second paragraph.
It's on page four.
Oh, yeah, page four, you're right.
Okay.
Page four, section B.
In terms of your, in terms of your findings of fact, which one is it? Okay. I think those would cover our first decision. The appeal of, what was it, 16? I'm sorry, one point.
2.16?
2.16, there we go. So could we, does anybody want to add, want any of the other ones that we've discussed included in our decision on 2.16?
I do.
Which one, please?
I would like in there, my number 10, where.
I did.
Oh, you did?
Actually, will you just go read what we have? I think that would clarify it for everyone, yes.
I have, is number one, the property is in an R1 zoning district. Number two, the helicopter pad slash patio is within 50 feet of the water's edge. Appleton states in section 2.16, no structure may be located within 50 feet of water's edge toward Lake. So that is actually acknowledging with the, okay. Three, the zoning ordinance requires a 50-foot setback on the water side of all R1 zoned ZBA 2020-3 decision defines a structure and helipad falls within definition. Ground level decks are exempt from zoning permit requirements according to zoning ordinance, section 19.02B, and all structures that are exempt from permits, permit requirements shall conform to all setback requirements. The zoning administrator does not have the authority to grant a dimensional variance. Legal brief dated 11/15/22, section one, second paragraph, second sentence states that the certificate allows a patio to be built within the 50-foot setback area. Again, an applicant's attachment, on applicant's attachment, a exemption certificate, nowhere is there a statement specifically allowing construction within the 50-foot setback. All it says is near shoreline, there is no language at all on certificate that authorizes a setback exemption. So.
I thought you had number 11 on that, on Rita's as well. I had marked that instead of 10 when you were talking earlier.
Oh, okay, let's see. Legal brief dated ZBA letter admits not only that it, there you go.
But maybe 10.
No, they're two separate points. 10 and 11 are two separate points I'd like to have it addressed.
So include 10 and 11.
Okay.
Yes, because one, they're admitting they're in error, and the second one, and the first one is where there's nowhere on the exemption certificate that talks about a 50-foot setback.
Are there any other findings you would like included? So since we've really focused on that one to start with and haven't discussed the second issue, let's go ahead and move forward with a motion.
Do you want to offer rebuttal?
Yeah, I do. So is there anything, do you have any comments you'd like to make before we?
I have one thing, and that is that based on my information believed, those graphics submitted with the land use exemption form were both presented to the township at the time that form was signed, which shows that the structure is within 50 feet of the shoreline. Beyond that, for that issue.
Okay, so you're saying that, okay, on these two, I see no setback markings, they're just plans for the patio. You're saying this, are you saying this shows? That it's within 50 feet. How can you tell?
And actually, it says proposed pad. It doesn't say, and that was dated in 2014.
Yeah, so those predate the exemption form. Could you repeat your question?
It wasn't a question, it was more of a statement. You were saying that it was presented and, and it says proposed pad. So I'm not quite sure how proposed pad with a takeoff and landing has to do with the patio and where they're talking about the 50-foot setback.
They relate to the patio as they were attached to the exemption form, so they further described the exemption that was being requested.
Anything else?
Not for this issue.
So, Ford, any other comments regarding this? Would anybody care to venture a motion?
I will.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we, I will make a motion that we take your findings of fact there and, what, proceed with it?
Okay.
How do you want a word to add? Who's?
How about a motion to approve or deny the appeal of the zoning administrator's decisions in regard to section 2.16, that the patio structure is in 50, is in the 50-foot water setback and therefore is in violation of the zoning ordinance?
Who's ever taken notes? That's what, that's what I'm, that's my motion.
Is that your motion, Laura?
Laura can make the motion, you could second it, Dave.
All right.
I'll second.
I'll make.
I, I would encourage you to, I don't remember you saying that in the motion, based on your findings that you, that you made. Was that included in your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Based on findings of facts, one through eight. All right, let me reread that. I move to deny ZBA 2022-02, appeal of zoning administrator's decision in regard to section 2.16, the patio structure is in 50-foot water setback and therefore is in violation of zoning ordinance, based on findings of fact, one through eight. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Does anybody have any other discussion or comment they want to make regarding this? Okay, in that case, I will do a roll call vote. Nussdorfer?
Yes.
Graves? Rita? Me, yes. And Woodward? All right. Appeal ZBA 2022-02 in regard to section 216 of the zoning ordinance is denied by a vote of five to zero. Okay, let's move on to the second issue, and that is whether or not the helicopter All right, I will start off with some of my thoughts on that, and feel free to interrupt The zoning ordinance defines accessory use as a use on the same lot and of a nature customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use. Merriam-Webster defines customarily as by or according to custom or established practice. Synonyms include usually, commonly, routinely, and regularly. I think Rita addressed that with a couple of her.
Yeah, it was number 12.
So, my next one would be the use of a helicopter is, oh, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to go that one. Torch Lake zoning ordinance is characterized as a permissive ordinance. The helicopter landing pad does not qualify as a permitted special use under section 7.02, 02 of the zoning ordinance. I guess then, were there any others that you wanted to include?
Can I make a comment about that last one?
Mm-hmm.
The helicopter landing pad does not qualify as a permitted special use.
Yes.
Are you saying only as a special use or also as a permitted use? Because we, there's two different sections. We've got permitted uses and then there's special uses.
I think I meant to say permitted or special use.
Okay. Because permitted can be used multiple ways, so that's why I just wanted to make sure. So permitted or.
And I think that was kind of a follow-up to the zoning ordinance is permissive. So it's not stated there in our zoning ordinance, therefore it is not a permitted or a special Kevin, did you have any findings that you wanted added?
No, again, I think Rita covered most of those with her presentation. A couple of things I might, just as a comment, my first time up here, but I, just for the record, do have property near the, the property in question here. But some of the things, the comments I've heard this evening, I agree with. I have questions within my own mind in terms of when you have float planes, noise as such, when the A-10s come flying across the deck, I've mentioned that before. I, I don't, by, by zoning ordinance, I know where we're at and where, where this is going. But there's a side of me that also understands that there's use of different airplanes, helicopters, jets, you know, my, my dogs won't go out when the A-10s come flying by, you know? They, they hear a sound they don't like and they come back in. So I guess from the standpoint, I do agree with comments that were made, but that I do have a tough time trying to restrict everyone from trying to do things that, that maybe they've, they've worked at. I, I think everything works as a compromise. And I've done this a long time in a previous life. And to, you just, there's a lot of workability. And I understand where everyone's coming from here, because like, we're all in the same area. But I, I think there's a lot of things that through time, you just can't shut down also. So that being said, I think everyone's covered the issues at hand. But I just would like to, you all to know that I agree, but yet I still have questions as to why, you know, we can allow some things and others we can't.
So I might respond to that by saying that the Torch Lake Township does not have the authority to regulate activities or use of the lake's surface. So. Whoever the powers of be, that be, that do have the authority, they've chosen not to. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't regulate the use of the land in our township, you know, for the purposes set forth in the, in the master plan, which I think one of them is, you know, the rural.
Right.
Quiet nature of our.
Right. I, I guess, I just, as I've grown up and, you know, went to high school in Elk Rapids, and I remember being on Elk Lake, and we, there were airplanes that landed on the water, and they floated and came right up on land, back in the day. I think this still probably happens. But, no, I, thank you. I know exactly what you're saying.
Okay. So back to the findings of fact, Laura?
Yeah, so.
So on the accessory use, I'm not sure whether we can include it or not, but it was in mine number 14, where they were talking of, oh, no, actually, number 15, where they said, you know, it's also because they're very important that they're concerned about traffic, the congestion on US 31. But in fact, Torch Airport is, they're on US 31 for a mile from Torch Port Airport. So that was, that's, was also their contention of using the helicopter as an accessory use.
Tristan, any thoughts on that?
Well, I would, if they're using the argument they're trying to keep US 31 from being clogged, regardless if they're coming from an airport or not, then what would stop them from taking their helicopter to Eastport Market to get groceries? I mean, if you think about it, it's, it's, it's ridiculous to say that they're using the helicopter to avoid congestion, adding to congestion on US 31. I don't think, I don't think it stands merit.
Oh, yes, I agree with you, yes.
Okay. So we want to include that as written? Or do we want to kind of modify it based on what you said?
I, I, I could go either way, to be honest with you. I don't know if it needs to be written in there as a finding of fact, but.
My only argument is that they're using it as an argument for the use of the helicopter, that they're using the helicopter because it creates too much pressure on US 31. And in fact, they say that traffic congestion is a large concern, that the use of the helicopter to get to and from the airport can avoid and alleviate some pressure on US 31. Well, if they use the Torch Lake Airport, it's a mile on US 31. So their argument, their finding of fact of saying, I'm using a helicopter for transportation because I want to help alleviate traffic on US 31, is again a nonsensical article since, as an argument, because there's an airport three miles from their front door and one mile on 31. That's my contention, that's my finding of fact.
So. I think, I think your opinion is relevant, but I'm not sure that, that goes to defining whether taking a helicopter, using a helicopter to go to a residential property and leave from it is. That it's relevant to that, to that issue?
I think.
Whether it's an accessory use and whether it's relevant to that issue?
But I think they're using it as a reason, as an accessory use of the helicopter. So they're claiming the helicopter as an accessory use because they're using it as transportation to and from their residence, where other people in their brief, they also talk where some people use bicycles going from their residences. Will they use a helicopter? And they're trying to avoid congestion 31. Well, you can land the helicopter in Torch Port and only on 31 for a mile. So my, my contention is that their argument of saying, well, the helicopter use is an accessory use because they're helping avoid congestion on 31 by using their helicopter to get to their house. So my finding of fact is there's an airport three miles from their front door. That's my finding of fact. And they're one mile on US 31 from Torch Port Airport.
Okay, so. Let's try to drill down to whether it's, uh, I think the real, the real issue here is whether it's customarily incidental to. To the residential property, to the use and enjoyment of the residential property. And. So.
So would we need to, so then would we need to look more at how we're defining customarily?
Mm-hmm. Yes, I think we need to kind of move in that direction.
So.
They gave us some case law that. Was. A lot of opinion on. And, and I think I agree with the fact that you don't separate customary and incidental. But I think that. That we need to define customarily incidental and talk about whether it's. Customary. If it's customary to fly an airplane, or fly an airplane, or a helicopter, or anything else. What's, what is customarily?
In Torch Lake Township.
In Torch Lake Township, correct.
And are we saying that's in a way that follows the usual or traditional way of doing something?
Well, I would read it that way, based on synonyms of customarily. They're, they include usually, commonly, routinely, regularly.
Okay, and so. I'm trying to think of a good example. Would. So I'm understanding the way we're using the definition. Would it be like? Like an, like an American flag is flown from sunrise to sunset? That's customarily use?
Yes.
Okay.
Doesn't 14 kind of cover what you're trying to say?
I'm sorry?
Doesn't 14 kind of cover what you're trying to say? I'm not quite sure.
So I'm, so actually Rita, let's go back to your point 14, because I'm not understanding, it says the zoning ordinance does not specifically provide for. Oh, they say the zoning.
Right, that's what they said.
Does not specifically provide for use of vehicles or transportation to and from one's residence. This use exists and is allowed. On the contrary, since the zoning ordinance does not list a helicopter as permissible use, it is therefore not allowed. So are you saying that this use exists and is allowed because it is customary?
No, I'm saying that's what they're saying. I'm saying to the contrary, that the zoning ordinance is not specifically, as you stated, that the, that the zoning ordinance is a permissive ordinance, and if it's not in there, then it's disallowed. Where their contention is, is like, well, you know, it's silent, so, you know, I can, I can use it. I can use my helicopter. Where in fact, the zoning ordinance, since it does not allow helicopters, then the helicopter is disallowed.
Okay.
Does it help if you analyze that along with paragraph number 12?
My paragraph 12?
Yeah.
I think 12 does the customary and the incidental, pretty good.
It also refers to Todd's case law that he has in his memo as well, I think. Because I think Todd quotes the Reddington Ranch Associates versus Pima County.
I'm sorry.
County, so I think that's also, that case law is also describing the, the accessory use.
Rita, could you say that again, please?
Well, in Todd's memo, if I'm reading it correctly, he talks about a court of appeals decision for Arizona in the Reddington Ranch Associates versus Pima County. So that's where he, there's a description of the customary and incidental. So I think. Todd's case law is also a finding of fact on, on customary incidental, which flies in the face of what the applicant is saying.
Okay, can you point out the?
It's on page three of Todd's.
Okay, in which sentence or, or section are you referring to?
It didn't highlight exactly the words, hang on.
While Rita's looking for it, I would caution you against using the phrase customary and incidental, or customary, well, customary and incidental.
Right.
It's not what the ordinance says.
It's, customarily defines incidental, it's.
Right, but customarily is an adjective that describes incidental.
And that's the exact same verbiage analyzed by the Court of Appeals in Arizona in the Pima County case. And that's why I'm arguing or suggesting that it is authoritative for you to review it and to look at it. And to consider it in the course of your deliberation.
So even though I broke down the adjective in the noun, and customarily incidental, right, you're saying that even though I broke down the definitions, you still look at them together?
You use the phrase customary and incidental. And I'm just saying be careful about using that and making sure that you're analyzing the phrase customarily incidental.
Well, no, I would disagree. I wasn't breaking down customarily and incidental. I was describing the adjective, giving the definition of the adjective, customarily, and the definition of incidental.
Okay.
As opposed to breaking them down, it was a description of the adjective. So to your point in that case, on page four, in the middle of your paragraph, where you say, whether a new use that is incidental is permissible or should turn on whether that use, when generalized, would have a, I'm going to mispronounce it, bleederous impact on legitimate zoning objectives. So if we were to hold that the Redmond's helicopter was customarily incidental use, we would be construing the code to allow all residences and businesses to use helicopters. The effect in terms of noise, invasion of privacy, potential safety hazards could be enormous. We therefore conclude that Redmond's use of a helicopter is not permissible. That's the essence of the court case that you defined as the proper use of customarily incidental. That's on page four, in the middle of the paragraph. Todd's memo.
So. Using a car to get on and off your property is done by most everybody in the township, so we would call that customarily incidental. Correct?
I believe so.
Customarily.
So. I would say that using a helicopter to get on and off your property would be considered incidental, but I'm not sure that it would be customarily incidental. I don't think it's common in Torch Lake Township. I don't think it's, um, what were the?
It's not standard, as you said, yeah.
Uh, based on the Merriam-Webster definition of customarily and synonyms for it, it's not usually used to, to get, uh, go to or from your property. It's not commonly used to go to your, or from your property. And it's not routinely used, it's not regularly used by 99.9% of the residents who, who live here?
Agree.
Agree.
Okay, so. What are our findings of facts that support that opinion? Do you want? The definition? The definitions in the.
Um, I don't know, can we use Todd's case? As a finding of fact?
No, that's not a finding of fact, as much as it is an authority.
A reference to an authority?
Well, is the finding of fact that in fact helicopters are not a standard, is not a standard, routine, common use of transportation to and from one's property in Torch Lake Township?
On Chad's finding of fact, number six, he has residential helicopter use is not common, customarily incidental to this area.
That's well written.
So I think we should just use his. If everyone's in agreement that it's. So I think we should just use his, if everyone's in agreement that it's worded clearly and precise to what we're, how we're defining it.
Yep.
Okay.
You could also reference what you heard tonight about the number of helicopter landing pads that there are within the township. Kind of ties into that.
From what I heard, there are two helicopter landing pads in the township. Is that correct?
That's what, we were talking about this one and one other one, is what I heard.
That's what I heard from the audience.
Boy, I think that's a lot. Must be on the south end of the lake somewhere.
I don't know.
They used to be going across the lake here from us, but that was gone now.
And how many houses with driveways?
I don't know how many dwelling units that we have to, you know, I'm going to say there's at least 1,000 houses in the township. I don't have an exact number for you, though.
I think there's like, is it 1,400 voting residents in the township? I'm just trying to get a perspective on...
Transportation, yeah, of what...
1,400 voters?
Pardon?
You said 1,400 voters?
Yes, I believe there are 1,400.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily relate to how many houses, if there's two voters in that.
No, that wouldn't. But I'm just trying to get a perspective somehow here, because I know that there's, there could be more, because a lot of people who own houses and have driveways and use cars to get in and out are not registered voters in this township. So what do I say? There are two helicopter pads in the township that we are aware of, or just in the township?
We should say according to verbal testimony or something, because...
I think so, in Torch Lake, not in the township.
The whole lake of Torch Lake?
Maybe the whole lake, but there's not two in Torch Lake Township.
That hasn't been verified.
There is?
That was what was said tonight. Someone in their, someone in their comments said that there were two helicopter pads.
In Torch Lake Township, on the lake? On the lake, or?
Okay.
Do we use that as a finding of fact, even though it has made a statement not by us? That has not been founded? We have not verified that, in fact, there are two? Can we use that as a statement of fact, even though we have not had verification of a second?
That is the only information that has been submitted to you, is that at most there are two helicopter pads within the township.
Okay, that we've been made aware.
No reason to provide you with any information that there's more.
Okay.
And so I think it is fair for you to make a finding of fact that, based on the evidence presented and received at the ZBA hearing, there are at most two helicopter pads.
In Clint's letter, he says, "This new regulation directly impacts me, as I have a helipad on the lakeside of my property and landed there previously." And his address is 11767 Wild Cherry Lane, Kuwait in Michigan. So he's, in his letter that he gave us, he's saying he has a helipad within the township, besides the verbal public comment that we received tonight.
Okay. So there are at most two helicopter pads in the township, according to verbal comments during the hearing?
In the township, yeah.
Okay. So right now I have, as findings of facts, the zoning ordinance defines accessory use as a use on the same lot and of a nature customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use. Merriam-Webster defines customarily as by or according to custom or established practice. Synonyms include usually, commonly, routinely, regularly. The Torch Lake zoning ordinance is characterized as a permissive ordinance, therefore, the helicopter pad does not qualify as a permitted or special use under section 7.02 of the There are at most two helicopter pads in the township, according to verbal comment In reference to section 7.02, applicant states its patio helipad is an accessory use to principal use. Zoning ordinance defines accessory use as, this is a duplicate of that one. Do we, so what, so we've stated that part here, the definite, or how the zoning ordinance defines accessory use. Do you want to include these additional definitions with the other definitions, the Merriam-Webster and definitions?
And number 12 over Rita's?
Do you know which dictionary you used in that definition, Rita?
I believe it was Webster's, or it could have been Wikipedia. I'm not sure.
Well, the second half of customarily says by or according to custom, that's the same that you have from Webster's.
Yeah.
And number two. So the synonyms, I mean, I don't see why you could combine those two.
Okay.
And say, you could say you are number two, that Merriam-Webster, and then add in number 12.
Those are...
If everybody's comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think so, because I think that they're just kind of saying the same thing in two different ways.
But she defines incidental there, so that's kind of nice.
Not to be taken separately. It's just a definition of the adjective, the noun.
Okay, so then we add to the second one I read. Merriam-Webster defines customarily as by or according to custom or established practice. Synonyms include usually, commonly, routinely, regularly, accepted, traditional, common, And then incidental is also, let's see, incidental is defined, is happening or likely to happen in an unplanned or subordinate conjunction with something else. Synonyms ancillary, coincidental, and secondary. Is that correct?
In my mind.
And then we have residential helicopter use is not common, customarily incidental to this area.
Agree with that?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
I did find how many dwelling units we have in the township.
Okay.
In 2015, this is in the Township Master Plan, so in 2015, it has a total housing
Okay, so do we want to modify the two? The fourth one, to include that, there are at most two helicopter pads in the township, according to verbal comments during the hearing. And according to, did you say a census?
It's the Torch Lake Township Master Plan.
To Torch Lake Township Master Plan...
Table 13.
There are 1,428 housing units. So, all right.
And not to beat a dead horse.
Pardon?
Not to beat a dead horse, but I'm going to keep beating my horse. In their same argument, where they're talking about customarily being used, they say, "The owners of the property are using the helipad for transportation to and from the residence, much like most of us use vehicles or bikes for transportation to and from their house." They also say, when they're talking about the helicopter usage for the purpose in transportation to and from the residence is an accessory use, which is customarily incidental and subordinate to the primary use. And it's like what you just said, it is not customary for this group. And in their same argument, again, with the horse, there's, "This residential district is also located in a township where traffic congestion is a large concern. Use of a helicopter to get to and from the airport can avoid and alleviate some of the pressure on US 31." So again, they're saying that this is why they're using it as an accessory use for them to get to and from their house, because they are avoiding traffic congestion on US 31. I, in my mind, still think that that is a finding of fact.
Why don't you do just a quick voice?
Okay.
To see if anybody agrees and do majority of the decision of the ZBA members.
In which number were you referring to, again?
On mine, it is 15.
So...
I'm sorry, I was talking to Jackie.
I believe that's, I believe that's their opinion, but it's not necessarily a finding of fact.
Thank you.
So I would argue that that's not a finding of fact. Anybody else want to make a comment on that? Okay.
Go ahead. I would agree with you on maybe not a finding of fact, but to your point, yeah, they use it like a car, but I don't think it's based on what we're probably looking at, based on total zoning. So I would agree with you not to maybe put that in.
Okay, so let's just take a quick straw poll here. Those who want it added, raise your hand. Those who think it should be left out, raise your hand.
Well, now that I know I'm one of the wealthiest 1% of the country, I feel pretty important.
There were a lot of interesting comments there.
I was always thinking those 1%ers were really up there somewhere.
Okay. I think we have our findings here. I'm not missing one? Shall I run through them again, or? Number one, zoning ordinance defines accessory use as a use on the same lot and of a nature customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use. Number two, Merriam-Webster defines customary as by or according to custom or established practice. Synonyms include usually, commonly, routinely, regularly, accepted, traditional, common, conventional, standard. Helipad is not common, standard, or conventional in TLT. Dictionary also defines incidental as happening or likely to happen in an unplanned or subordinate conjunction with something else. Synonyms include ancillary, coincidental, and secondary.
I'm okay with that.
Number three. The Torch Lake zoning ordinance is characterized as a permissive ordinance, therefore, the helicopter landing pad does not qualify as a permitted or, as permitted or special use under section 7.02 of the zoning ordinance. There are at most two helicopter pads in the township, according to verbal comments during the hearing, and according to Torch Lake Township Master Plan, table 13, there are 1,428 housing units. Number five would be residential helicopter use is not common, customarily incidental to this area. We good?
Good.
Yep.
Good.
And, or do we want to add, therefore, it is not an accessory use in Torch Lake Township?
Yes, I think we should.
I'm going to add that to number five.
Can you reread number five once you get done writing that?
Okay. Residential helicopter use is not common, customarily incidental to this area, and therefore is not an accessory use to an R1 property in Torch Lake Township. Okay. Those are our findings. And I have a motion? Or would you like me to propose a motion?
Please.
Yeah. Further discussion, or once the motion's made, is there further discussion from the council, or?
We can take further discussion now, and then we can also, once a motion is made, we can discuss the... we can discuss the motion itself, so. Would you like to add any comments? Yes, go ahead.
I just have one point, and I think it's an important one. The cases that the attorneys for you cited, Reddington is an Arizona case, and the other one, Sinclair, is a Connecticut case. Neither of those cases are binding or precedential in Michigan. The only cases which are are Michigan cases. And I just want to read this excerpt from the Michigan Case Lerner. I think it's a really important statement here, and it's that, I quote, "None of the plaintiff's authorities for the proposition that her practice is customarily done in homes is relevant to her claim that it is customarily incident to her residential use. The term incident is pivotal here," unquote. So the Michigan court case here, I believe, is saying that whether or not it's customarily done is not relevant to the discussion whether or not it's customarily incident is, with incidental being the most important word there. And just to further cite that case, it said Michigan cases have found the following not to be accessory uses of prop... Oh, sorry. Pardon me, I meant to say that the cases in which an accessory use was found, the question is, did it enhance the principal use of the property and was it found to be accessory to the principal use? And here I really do think that the landing of a helicopter does enhance the use of the property, and it only occurs there because of the principal use as a residence. So I just wanted to make that clear, and I believe that is the binding and precedential law here, and that the Reddington and Sinclair, while they may... Those states may interpret it differently, that's not binding in this state of Michigan.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts? Okay. So I would like to say that based on the findings of facts, we've found that landing a helicopter is not an accessory use to an R1 property in Torch Lake Township, and therefore make the motion to deny ZBA 2022 appeal of zoning administrator's decision that landing a helicopter in the R1 zoning district is a violation of Section 701 of the zoning ordinance. Would you like me to say that again? Okay. You know, I'm going to reword it. I'd like to make a motion to deny ZBA 2022-02 appeal of zoning administrator's decision that landing a helicopter in the R1 zoning district is a violation of Section 7.01 of the zoning ordinance based on findings of fact and... Findings of fact that... And I'm sorry, based on findings of fact and interpretation that it is not an accessory use in Torch Lake Township. One more time?
Yeah, because it sounds to me like you got double negatives in there.
I know. Motion to deny ZBA 2022-02 appeal of zoning administrator's decision that landing a helicopter in the R1 zoning district is a violation of Section 7.1 of the zoning ordinance.
I'm confused the way that reads because it sounds like you're denying it, but you're saying that...
We're denying the appeal.
Okay, but then where's the word "the violation" come in? Could you just read it one more time again?
Okay. We're denying their appeal. Their appeal states that they're appealing the zoning administrator's decision that landing a helicopter in the R1 zoning district is a violation of Section 7.1 of the zoning ordinance.
Could you just restate it to uphold the zoning administrators?
I could do that.
Violation, you know, violation letter in some way.
Yeah.
And I guess then you could add at the end and deny their appeal or something.
I don't know.
Motion to uphold decision of zoning administrator that landing a helicopter in an R1 zoning district is a violation of 177.01 of the zoning ordinance. Appeal of ZBA 2022-02 denied?
Do we say it is denied based on the findings of facts of the accessory uses?
Uh huh.
She has a lot of writing tonight.
Okay.
Sorry.
Motion to uphold decision of zoning administrator that landing a helicopter in the R1 zoning district is a violation of Section 7.1 of the zoning ordinance. Appeal of ZBA 2022-02 denied based on finding of fact and interpretation of accessory use.
Can I just ask, sorry, do we need to include the dates of Sarah's letter? Do we have to say Sarah's June 28th letter of violation, her July 22nd violation, and her September 23rd violation, or don't we need to go into that kind of detail in the motion? Okay.
I think you had some additional language at the end after the findings based on that it's not a customarily or accessory use in Torch Lake Township or something. Maybe you said that before and it...
Yeah.
And then I think it was scratched out, but I think it might need to be in there.
So how does that end, based on the criteria findings, that sentence that you have right there? Based on the criteria?
Based on findings of fact and interpretation of accessory use. Accessory use to not include the landing of helicopters? Is that what you're looking for?
I think there was... I can't remember what you said, but before...
That landing of helicopters is not an accessory use or...?
Yeah, in Torch Lake Township. Yeah, that the landing of helicopters is not an accessory use.
I got so many scratches here. Landing. Is not... It's actually said it's referenced to R1, so. Okay. Let me see if I can get this right. Motion to uphold decision of zoning administrator that landing a helicopter in the R1 zoning district is a violation of Section 7.1 of the zoning ordinance. Appeal of ZBA 2022-02 denied based on findings of fact and interpretation that landing of helicopters is not an accessory use in Torch Lake Township. That's my motion. I'm not reading it again. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? And I will do a roll call vote. Woodward?
I would hear that. Aye.
Nusterfer?
Aye.
Graves?
Aye.
Service?
Aye.
Anderson, aye. Okay. Appeal ZBA 2022-02 in regards to Section 7.1 is denied by a vote of five to zero. The township will follow up with correspondence confirming tonight's hearing, and that concludes the public hearing of ZBA 2022-02. Hang on board, we've got some other stuff to take care of. Thank you.
We'll give him a minute just to clear out. Pardon? Give him a minute just to clear out. Nice job, Laura. Fell all on you to write that motion. It's so tedious during the meeting.
Well, I was like, I can't even think of anything else because I'm not sure what word you're on.
Yeah.
Well, I just find it hard to walk and chew gum at the same time. That includes writing and talking at the same time.
Good job.
Thank you. I spent all day doing it.
Yeah, well, that's our next order of business. Shall we?
Sorry, I couldn't hear you. I was coughing.
Shall we move on?
What, are you putting like a mint? I have mints.
Pardon?
I have mints plus cough drops.
I'm okay. I have my water.
All right, ready, board?
Yes.
Okay. We have, at our annual meeting in November, the job to elect officers, and so we need to nominate and elect the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. And I'd be happy to take volunteers as well as nominations, so do I have any?
I'm Nate Laura Anderson, as chair.
I second that.
We're all jumping on that.
Okay, I'm going to see if we can get through this fast. I would like to nominate Chad again as vice chair.
Second.
I second.
And I would also like to nominate Kristen as secretary.
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations?
What were the nominations?
Are there any other nominations? Okay. I would then like to make a motion to elect the following slate of officers for a one-year term for chair, Laura Anderson, for vice chair, Chad Impelizieri, and for secretary, Kristen Graves. Can I have a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Next order of business, the meeting calendar, and that was in...
Yeah, it was the very last page of your packet.
Packets and...
So sticking with the third Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM.
Right, so it doesn't say here on seven. I am wondering if there's any reason we couldn't make the meeting earlier to kind of poll everybody and see how they feel about that issue. I mean...
Six.
I could do, I could go for six. Could you go for six, Rita?
Yeah.
Kristen?
I can do six.
Okay. Sarah?
Six is good with me.
Okay.
Should, do we need to check with Chad?
I think let's do it at six, and then if we need to come back to the, and address it, then we will.
I just know with his teachings, I don't know what his, you know. Okay.
We'll reach out to him now, and then if it's an issue next time.
I would prefer six, but just saying, I just want to be fair.
Okay. All right, so then, let's see.
We would just need a motion to schedule for 2023, the meeting, regular meetings are on the third Wednesday at 6:00 PM.
I make a motion that the meetings for 2023 are on the third Wednesday at 6:00 PM.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Sarah, back to you.
The zoning administrator's report is on your desk for where the permits we've issued, violations, all those, all those good items. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them tonight, or feel free to give us a call, and we can explain anything to you as well.
There on this?
Yes.
So...
So this is the list of violations?
No, the first page is the list of permits where it's got the ZP, those numbers all the way up to 55.
Okay.
And then on page two starts the special use applications we've had, and then at the bottom of that is land divisions that we've processed, and then ZBA cases are the next, they're kind of split there, and then we've got the violations are kind of in that gray box.
Guess all I need to do is read the headings.
Okay. Sorry. It's okay.
Okay, I don't think I have any questions. Okay.
I don't have any questions.
You've used your questions up.
Come on. No, it's not a question about this, it's about a future thing, so we've talked, well...
Okay, if you're talking about...
Because it's brought to our attention that there's an old helipad in the area that would need to be cognizant of and would need to be checked to see whether there's any violations in that as well.
Right, so we'll follow up with that after the meeting, based on the decision.
Okay.
Kevin?
Planning Commission.
Yes.
Thank you. We met last Thursday, I believe that was November 10th, and we started to go over the process of the steering committee's updating of zoning ordinances, and as we got into it, there were some questions raised that we would like some further discussion, so we will be moving forward with that. Sarah's going to help us out, I believe Supervisor Cook's going to help us a little more at our next meeting, and I think we're tentatively scheduled for December 13th.
Great.
That's all I have.
Anybody have a question for Kevin? Rita?
No, I'm good.
Go ahead, go ahead, come on.
I might not be able to answer that.
Okay, I'm guessing there's no more public comment because there's nobody... Okay, I'm guessing there's no more public comment because there's nobody in the audience? So summary of action items before next ZBA meeting. Do we have anything coming up?
We do not have any applications, no expected applications. I do want to bring up that our next meeting is scheduled for December 21st, which is the week of Christmas. We do need to approve tonight's meeting minutes, so I would suggest trying to, unless everybody can be present for that, schedule a meeting maybe the week before or--
I would prefer, because I will have family at home, I would prefer to try to schedule something sooner to, in the, a special meeting just for the purpose of approving the minutes.
So the, really the earliest that we could do that would be the week of the 28th of November to get the minutes approved.
And I am not available, but--
Okay, the week of the 28th.
I'm gone that whole week after Thanksgiving.
Okay, what about the week of the 5th?
The following week I can be available.
The week of the 5th? What about--
I'm not, I'm out for a few weeks with surgery here for the first--
You know, but we do have, we just need, we need a quorum, but we'll have Chad, too, so.
So the week of the 5th, December, maybe sometime?
The 8th I have, well, I have the 8th available, but if it's just approval of minutes, you don't need me here to go through that process, so you could pick any night that week. It's the first week, we don't have any regular standing meetings. We don't have any case, and the township doesn't have us any standing meetings, so. Okay.
And, sorry, I don't know how to use my calendar on here. I'm still, I like my paper one at home.
Jackie's going to check the calendar, just to make sure.
So, since, do you have any other meetings here that week?
I do not, no.
Of the 5th, okay, or does, does anybody?
She's going to check the calendar just to make sure that the room's not reserved that any night that week.
Because if there's like a regular meeting and we came 45 minutes earlier, that might be nice for whoever has to record the meetings if we just, I mean, I anticipate this being a five--
Five-minute meeting.
--minute meeting.
Yeah, there's, we don't have any other meetings that week.
Okay.
So as long as we have a quorum and someone recording the minutes.
Correct.
Okay, so does anybody have a preference or a night of the week they don't want to do it then?
Which week?
The week of the 5th, December 5th.
December 9th is out.
December 9th is out, that's a Friday, yeah, Friday's always--
What if we just, because we normally meet on Wednesdays, what if we just did Wednesday?
Do it the 7th?
You want to do it at 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock?
I would rather do it at 6 o'clock.
No. Well, I guess I can't be there, I can't be here, so somebody needs to unlock the door.
I can unlock the door, I just have a 6 o'clock meeting.
Okay. Well, we can unlock it. Can you come a little bit early to stand guard?
Okay, so what--
So we're saying Wednesday, just that, we're saying Wednesday.
Jackie and I both can't be here, so she's going to unlock the door before she leaves.
Going to take the minutes of that?
Yes. Oh, you can unlock the door?
Okay, so Veronica, then you can, then you'll be here to unlock and take minutes.
Yep. Yeah, we should have him here, but let's tentatively schedule it, and then if we can't get that to work out with the recording.
And we have to make sure Chad can be here, because you'll be recovering.
Recovering.
Okay.
We're still on live stream, right?
So if there's, if there's four of us here, we can still--
Right, if there's three of you, there's--
And so I don't think, I mean, we will let Chad know, but I don't think, since he's not attending the meeting, this meeting, that it's critical that he be here to approve the others, as long as we have enough people to do it, so I think that should be fine.
Laura, is there, maybe you might call me earlier that week, maybe I catch your key from Sharon, and then you can--
Yeah, I have a key to get in.
Yeah.
It's the whole locking the place up afterwards that I'm a little--
Yeah. Well, Veronica, Veronica, Veronica will be here, Veronica can help you with that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I mean, I have my little white card that will let me in--
That gets you in everywhere you need to go. Yeah.
And through the doors, so.
So technically, yeah, we can all--
We just have to, there's, Veronica will make sure the door is unlocked, and she'll make sure the lights are shut off when she leaves.
Okay.
So, so 6:00 PM on December 7th, we're going to reschedule the regular meeting to that night.
Okay.
Unless we hear otherwise from you guys.
So is that a special meeting, or is it just a reschedule?
It'll be a special, it's considered a special meeting.
Can we call it a special meeting, then we don't have to do all the other things either, do we just--
We'll just call it a special meeting, yes, and we're going to cancel the regular.
Okay, because then all we have to do is the roll, you know, the basic roll call, approve the minutes, and we don't have to have a public comment and do all that stuff, do we, if it's--
You have to have one public comment.
One public comment.
Yeah, but it doesn't have to follow our traditional agenda. Yes.
So we can do it very--
We're going to call it a special meeting.
Right. Great. Okay, does anybody have anything else they want to say before I make a motion to adjourn?
Good job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that, you guys.
Okay. I would like to move that we adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at? 9:39.